It is seven o'clock, so we will call the tax rate hearing to order. Tonight, we do something a little different. This is a once-a-year event. The state requires us to have a hearing on our tax rate that we will set later on in the business meeting. And as many know, the tax rates are set to produce the revenues from the property tax required by the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014. So if there are any comments, these, the entire notice is posted in the front door downstairs at the District Administration Center and on the website, online, in the board documents. So if there are any comments at this time on the tax rate that we will be discussing later in the meeting, now is the time, if you'd like, to take the podium. Seeing none, that closes the tax rate hearing. And we will move on with the regular board meeting and our call to order. If you would, stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we do each month, we'll begin the meeting with Honoring Excellence. Mr. Ackerman?
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well, and the school year's off to a good start for you and your family. At this time, I am going to introduce, straight from St. Louis, Missouri, Ms. Kim Harrelson, who's the president-elect of the School Social Workers Association of Missouri. Tonight, she has a special presentation where her organization will honor one of our own. So, Ms. Harrelson, the podium is yours.
Thank you, President Connor, and the rest of the board, for allowing the School Social Workers Association of Missouri to speak at tonight's meeting. My name is Kim Harrelson, and this is Rachel Gabriel Nelson. We are with the School Social Workers Association of Missouri, and we are honored to present our organization's annual Friend of School Social Work Award. The Friend of School Social Work Award began in 1990 to recognize one person in the state that strives to advance our professional organization's mission. The recipient of the Friend of School Social Work Award must have demonstrated, over the past school year, dedication to the promotion of social work services in schools, combined with a strong desire to help not only our organization advance, but also advance our members' professional knowledge base, and foster a sense of community among our members. This year's recipient has spent many hours inspiring and working alongside your district social workers, creating innovative support programs to assist students in overcoming barriers to education, such as the CCRD group, the BEST Task Force, a back-to-school community event, a necessities closet, administration of emergency assistance funds, and advancement of the district's suicide prevention intervention efforts. His oversight of centralized enrollment and discipline, as well as coordinator of long-term suspension in McKinney-Eventhno homeless services, is administered with the utmost compassion and fairness. Not only does he continuously put the best interest of students and their families first, but believes in the investment of school social workers. He has successfully advocated for the advancement of the profession through the addition of district social workers during a time when we are most needed, but fiscally difficult to employ. He has supported the professional development of district social workers and encourages their involvement in their professional organization. According to the nominations received, this year's recipient, quote, "demonstrates the social work values of service, social justice, dignity and worth of the person, importance of human relationships, integrity and competence. We cannot imagine doing our job without his support. He truly is a friend of school social work, and also to the Liberty Public Schools students, families, staff, and to the Liberty community." Ladies and gentlemen, please acknowledge this year's Friend of School Social Work winner, Liberty Public Schools' own Director of Student Services, Dr. Jim Hammond.
Just real briefly, I wanted to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Tucker and his staff. This has been, this is a great honor. And of all the different things I do within my job, obviously, one of the things I'm most proud of is my friends and family, and that's what I refer to my social workers as. We've got several of them here this evening, and if it wasn't for them, the many things that we do for our kids prior to academics would not be accomplished. It is truly true that, you know, it doesn't matter so much what you know until people know that you care. And those folks do that every day. They are the difference makers in our school district. I just happen to be lucky enough to be associated with them. So, thank you.
And as he mentioned, so many of the social workers and other friends, longtime friends that he has had in the district coming out tonight, and we appreciate everyone for showing your support as well. Before I conclude here this evening, I thought we would take a moment and recognize Mr. Lee Williams, who served on the Liberty Public Schools Audit and Finance Committee from July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2014, just over a month ago. And Mr. Williams could not be with us tonight, but we did want to publicly recognize him. We will be sure to get this award to him. Of course, the Audit and Finance Committee, and Mr. Connor, you can elaborate on this if you choose, but such a critical component. And thank you to him for his service of countless hours over the course of the last three years. So, let's give him a big round of applause here this evening. So with that, that concludes Honoring Excellence for this evening.
When Lee was appointed three years ago, it seems like six months ago, so I'm kind of dating myself, time flies, there was a lot going on, and our Audit and Finance Committee continues to advise the board on financial matters. And I don't know if you're a football fan or not, but they're kind of like the offensive lineman sometimes of our organization. You don't hear a lot about them until maybe a decision gets made that's wrong, or people disagree with, or a flag gets thrown. But they do a great job of helping us keep things in order, and we appreciate not only Lee's service, but everybody who's serving on that committee right now. So, thank you to the Audit and Finance Committee as a whole. We need to approve the agenda first, and then we would ask Dr. Hammond, if he would stick around, we'd like to offer you our congratulations personally. But before we do that, we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Sure, second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, Sandra, we call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And before we break, we'll break for six or seven minutes here, so we can all shake Jim's hand. But there is an opportunity at each board meeting for public comment. We would ask that you fill out one of the blue cards outside if you would like to address the board tonight. I've received one, but if you get that to somebody up here over the next five or 10 minutes, we'll make sure you're on the list. So at this time, we will recess for six or seven minutes. How long can you shake hands? Seven minutes? We'll go seven and a half. Seven minutes, we'll be back.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the meeting and begin with Section 3.04, Public Comment. We do have some rules that we read prior to public comment, and if anybody has a blue card, let me know or bring it up. I have one. Do you have another? Go ahead. No, you have one right behind you. If you wouldn't mind, just, you have to come to the podium anyway. You get to be on. Thank you. People addressing the board will be asked not to repeat what someone has said before. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education may do so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. So first tonight, we have James Gottstein.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm James Gottstein. I'm the father of Jacob Gottstein. He's an 11-year-old boy, good-natured, and he has the aspect of autism. He's non-verbal. He has splinter skills. One of them is, that affects all kids with, probably on the spectrum, is their social development, which is probably around a two- or three-year-old. He doesn't understand what inappropriate touch is, and he's entering puberty. Quite frankly, he'll ask me to touch him in inappropriate places, but I have to try to educate him and tell him, "That's not appropriate, go to your room," et cetera. So that's the population you're dealing with. And here's the situation that occurred. About two or three weeks before school starts, we were told that ALC will provide transportation. They were not real clear on how that was going to become into being. I guess we made the assumption they were going to be Liberty employees, but they're not. It's a cab, ALC contracts a cab driver, and a cab driver contracts an aide to transport our non-verbal children who have hardly any social skills and no barriers, no way to report abuse. I passed out a PowerPoint that was developed by the Missouri Council on Developmental Disabilities. They developed a task force on the victimization of the disabled for Missouri in order to figure out why they cannot counter sexual assault against the disabled, why prosecution won't carry it out against the, because they're not credible witnesses. So there's a, there's a problem in society, period. You guys have taken kids out of the normal bus line, placed them in cabs with contracted cab drivers that you have background-checked. And I know that they've background-checked cops, police officers, priests, counselors, and they've been sexually abusers. So background checks are not any kind of guarantee that kids aren't going to be abused. I've been a cop for 23 years, and I've responded on many times where people that have no record of abuse have abused children. The abuse toward the disabled is usually because people have access to them. There's a crime triangle that you guys need to be aware of, and I'm almost at the end of my three minutes, but I'll skip that. What we would like is either you have cabs with video systems in it that are not tampered with, aides that are not connected to the driver, that are Liberty School District employees, and trained to deal with non-verbal children, or we'd like you to go back to a Liberty bus route with Liberty employees, so there can be some accountability. I do not believe cab drivers driving children that have a mentality of a three-year-old is appropriate for those kids. I think you're divorcing yourself from responsibility of those kids. Keep in mind, they were outsourced from your school because they failed to provide FAP as required by IDEA 2004. So they were already in your school district, and they failed to educate them, probably for a year. So then they were outplaced, at least my son was. I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy?
Am I saying that right, Cassidy Jobe?
Yes. Good evening. I want to apologize for my casual attire. It definitely does not convey the seriousness of the matter that I am addressing you about. My son is Parker Lundgren. He is a nine-year-old boy with autism who is non-verbal. He too has been affected by the transportation changes that were proposed to us as families two weeks ago, or at least I found about it, found out about it two weeks ago. Jacob's dad did a great job of conveying some of the things that have transpired, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I think that the point that I want to drive home is, my son has no generalization skills. He does not understand that it's not okay to just hop into a cab with a random adult. Generally speaking, cabs are not a safe transportation for any child, let alone a child with special needs. Also, it's important to understand that my son was in a situation where we only found out about verbal abuse that was taking place because of the video monitoring system that was on the school bus. And that's something that is incredibly important, not just for special needs children, but those safety measures are put in place for all children. And that's a standard that should not be departed from just because my child doesn't go to a Liberty Public School. So the standards that we're asking for are no different than what every child in the district has afforded. We have a great school district, and one of the tenants of our school district is standards of excellence. And our children with special needs, they deserve those same standards. And those standards are, you know, having safe transportation to and from school with people that can communicate with them. You would not put a driver on a bus of typical children who couldn't speak English. Why would you put a driver in a car with a special needs child who cannot speak English? Those two things just don't jive. So, to piggyback on what James said, I think what we're asking for is video monitoring systems that cannot be tampered with, aides that have been trained to deal with the behavior issues that my son has, drivers who have not only passed background checks, but are also trained in how to deal with special needs children, and also vehicles that are clearly identified as safe vehicles for these children to be transported in, not just a vehicle that they got from the airport. Thank you.
The other thing I want to remind everybody that, because this item, when we, when somebody brings something up a public comment, the item's on all the agenda, so by law, we can't talk about it now. We can put it on a later agenda if we decide to, but it's something we can't address tonight. Section 3.05 is committee and organization reports. Are there any organization committee reports? We might want to change or just push it down, do you think? Because we're not going to have a lot of this.
Should be the end.
Okay, consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 4.01 through 7.04. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on consent? If not, Sandra, we call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Machine carries.
7.04, that takes us to board policy updates, 8.01, board policy revisions.
Yeah, policy BBFA relates to board member conflict of interest in financial disclosure. Typically, we would present this for first reading and follow up with a second reading, given the timeliness of it and that school districts are asked to approve this by September 15th. We're asking that this evening, you, in first reading, actually adopt this particular policy. The provisions of it are related to Senate Bill 719. This is a biannual policy in which we approve in even-numbered years, so we're due to update it and approve it this year. So you have the information contained therein, and just would open it up for questions or concerns.
This applies to only board members. No administrators, no other.
Correct. This is specific to board members.
And candidates.
And board candidates. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? The recommended action is I move the board adopt policy BBFA on first read. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second? He's got a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Sandra, will you please call roll?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Takes us to new business, 9.01, the 2014-15 tax rate. We have a hearing earlier tonight on this part of the agenda. Should this be read into record, Sandra? The public content?
Doesn't have to. But Cindy's here this evening and can speak to the, what's been done on setting the tax rate, albeit the information was contained in the tax rate hearing notice. Just wanted to highlight a few areas prior to making that recommendation to you this evening, so we'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, Cindy Sullivan.
Based on the state auditor calculation data, a recommendation is being made to set the tax rate for 2014 at $4.90 for operating, 1.195 for debt service, and 36 cents for capital projects. This represents a 36-cent increase from the tax rate that was approved last year, and this 36 cents was voted on in November by the general public to increase our levy. So the total levy recommendation for the 14-15 fiscal year would be $6.455. The 2014 assessed valuation represents an increase of 2.83 percent, so that's a great turnaround from where we were last year when we saw a slight decrease. The total assessed valuation for Liberty Public School District, on which current taxes are collected, is $799,452. New construction included in assessed valuation is nearly $23.5 million, which represents a 39.53 percent increase over last year. Local tax revenues are approximately 35 percent of our operating revenue budget. Market value of properties assessed at 19 percent for residential property, 32 percent for commercial property, 12 percent for agricultural property, and 33.33 percent for personal property. And the tax rate is applied to per $100 of assessed valuation.
The only other thing to add to that would be the line item on the hearing notice as it relates to less assessed valuation. You'll notice that that's captured there to the total of $121,570,420 due to TIF. Keep in mind, payment in lieu of taxes revenue that we receive, that also offsets the revenue that that assessed valuation would generate. So just wanted to make a note of that. Questions for Cindy?
Going easy on you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so the recommended action would be I move the board set the 2014-2015 tax rate at $6.45 and a half cents. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Sandra?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Takes us to Section 10, Report from the Administration. I'll turn this section over to you, Dr. Tucker.
First off, we have Academic Services, Dr. Williams, Dr. Quorum, and Ms. Becky Gossett. This evening, Dr. Quorum will be sharing updates for the Academic Services report.
It's nice to have the first time standing up here, so it's nice to see you all from this angle. A couple of exciting pieces of Academic Services. First of all, certainly being new and sitting with both Becky and Marley, I think the team of the three of us have been really making some differences with the directors and hoping that we're doing that with principals as well. So it's nice to be able to stand up here and represent the three of us and not have to hear three things, but because we're working so well together, that we're able to really introduce things at the same time. So the first thing, some of the things we really have been working on, and I certainly would give kudos to Jeanette Westfall and Jason Bright, is we have a math resource adoption that was started in the spring of last year, and all of those resources came in pallets after pallets. I think we were up to 50 at one point in time, and then up to another 40 pallets. And Jason and his team, and Jeanette and her team, really made sure to have those in buildings and out to teachers and to students by the first day of school. So we're excited for our new math adoption and the resources that teachers and students will be seeing from a K-12 perspective. That was the first thing. The other thing that I know Dr. Vogelar has spoken to before is the knee training, and that is certainly some training that's coming out of the state, and it's the Network for Educational Effectiveness. All of our principals have been trained for knee for their teachers. I will certainly say, as I was walking around, that Andy Wright, on the very first day of school, had his clipboard and was already doing some of those walk-through visits with knees. So that was exciting to see, and both Marley and I will be piloting what that looks like for three principals, three elementary, and three secondary principals. So we're excited with Dr. Vogelar to be working through that as well. Another piece of exciting news for all of our teachers is we are moving more to that one-to-one district-wide, and really that focus on technology integration, is you will be hearing and seeing more about Bright Bites. And Bright Bites is our way to judge effectiveness of technology. It's a way to quantify what our teachers and our students are really growing and how they're changing and the effectiveness of technology. So it will be looking at classrooms, and it will be talking about what's the access to technology, what are the skills that students are learning, and what's the environment look like for technology. So you will hear more about that. That is a survey several times during the year. Bright Bites started many years ago with states like Maine and Iowa, who statewide went one-to-one, and they really are able to look at districts, classrooms, schools, for what the strengths and the opportunities for improvement for that tech integration. So we're excited to see that. And certainly on the heels of Jim and all of the work that the social workers have done, we have some congratulations for Jim and his team, certainly with the counselors and the social workers, that a couple of weeks ago, they had the two hours to SOAR, and that's the second year for an event that was able to service about 150 of our students and our families, to be able to provide backpacks and haircuts and beginning-of-the-year, pre-school opportunities for our families. So I think there, we were talking about it in our director's meeting, there was a line out of the door, and they were ready to go, and it was really an exciting event for our families, but also a big help and resource. So we appreciate Jim and his crew with social workers and counselors working on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for any of Academic Services? Item 10.02 is Human Resources Report. Dr. Vogelar, any additions?
Yes, thank you very much. The report is uploaded. I won't go through all of it, but I do want to draw your attention to a couple of prominent items. One is our compensation study that we acted upon last spring is launching. The group from Evergreen Solutions LLC will be arriving next week. They're going to meet with the leadership team, with Team Liberty, who will function as the steering committee, and then they'll be hosting orientations for all our support staff on the stages or phases of the compensation study, and then they'll be hosting focus groups with selected employees who've been invited to participate, all in an effort of gathering as much information as possible that will inform the job descriptions, because the job descriptions are what will drive the external equity comparisons to other organizations. They may title positions differently, but when the functions line up, well, then that's your comparison other group. So that compensation study will be launched next week. We're very excited about that. The other item I wanted to draw your attention to, and Dr. Quorum mentioned it with regard to the Network for Educator Effectiveness, but I want to add to that, that we're piloting the Principal Network for Educator Effectiveness tool this year as well. So Dr. Williams and Dr. Quorum were both trained, along with me, on evaluating principals using the criteria for principal evaluation, and then they're piloting, and we listed the participating principals in that pilot in the report, but we'll be piloting that this year with those principals and using, obviously, Dr. Williams and Dr. Quorum as major providers of that evaluation tool. So we're looking forward to that pilot unfolding this year as we progress. The final item I want to draw your attention to is with regard to substitute fill rates and absenteeism. As we're looking at the past three-year trends of that, we're trying to explore ways to improve our substitute fill rates. Fridays tend to be the most difficult time to fill during times of the year when subs, by nature, are less willing to accept jobs. Nice weekend travel and things, I mean, the very nature of being a substitute teacher means that there's flexibility around accepting those jobs. We're looking at those trends and trying to find ways to improve upon substitute fill rates and incentive incentives for subs to take those jobs on Fridays throughout the year, in the hopes that that will improve that subrate. We're likely going to be coming to you with some recommendations for incentives, ways to approach improving the fill rates for our substitute teachers. So those are the highlights of the HR report. There's other items, obviously, up there related to our So those are the highlights of the HR report. There's other items, obviously, up there related to our effectuation of the strategic plan, but those are the ones I want to highlight for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel. 10.03 is our finance report. Cindy Sullivan?
As I reported and the information I gave you, I'd like to thank the Cross and Bushfield and the South Valley Middle School PTA for making donations to the district this month. The Audit and Finance Committee met a week ago tonight, and I would like to thank you for the appointing of the two new members. They were both with us, and I think they're going to bring a lot to the table. They have a perspective that we haven't had in a while, so I do appreciate you appointing both of them to the committee, and I think they're going to have.
Are we at six now?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. So thank you for their appointment. They will both be very good on the committee, so we're excited to see what they bring this year. The September meeting will be electronic, but our next physical meeting is October 13th at 5:30. You are welcome to join us at any time. We'd love to have you. The last thing, I'd like to inform you, Westbrook and Company is here today and the rest of this week performing the fieldwork for the rest of our annual audit and on completion, if they will be here to present, as always, a report to the board. Thank you.
Questions regarding finance? Next, in regard to operations, 10.04, Steve Anderson. Also included in his report are program evaluations for business operations, health service, kids' own nutrition services, purchasing and distribution, safety and security, transportation, facilities and grounds. So, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. I will keep this reasonably brief and certainly entertaining questions. Quickly, on the operations report, the first piece is construction. And just to kind of button that up, all the elementary schools are complete, open. Everything, we're just now at a point where we're kind of finalizing a few loose items. The only remaining piece of any consequence is the kitchen at Epic. We expect that should be completed here within the next week or two. So that's, that all came together as planned and on schedule. We are now moving into the two high school projects. Obviously, they've been underway for some time, but we have, we're now, the entire project team is now kind of diving into the details as we get ready to move that into the next phase and finalizing some of the adjustments and adds to the project that were brought in here within the recent month or two. As for the rest of the department, as is outlined in the report, facilities and grounds, there's a brief note in there about after-hours emergency contact information. Nutrition services and update on some of the compliance issues with, with recent federal standards. And then purchasing and distribution, I'd just like to call out, as was earlier, to Jason and his team. They've been extremely busy getting ready for the start of the school and also working very, very closely on a lot of this construction, a lot of construction projects and providing all the FFNE and furnishings for those, for those projects. So they've been very busy and everything came together just as planned, which is always a good thing. Last of note is transportation. This was one that I was a little braced for, not sure how the first few days would go. And I think, again, the team was very prepared. There were a couple glitches in the system. We had one issue with the bus and a couple routes that were, that needed to be ironed out. But I think all in all, it went quite well for the first week and a half. And I think we're feeling pretty confident that we have a, a good plan in place to kind of carry forward the mission of the department.
My girls were on the bus that broke down day one.
Really?
And everything went very, very smoothly. Yeah, they just transferred buses. One bus.
As for the program evaluations, just, you know, reading through them again here before the meeting, I think just to capture a theme and looking at all the various departments. And in talking to staff since I've been on board here the last few weeks, a lot of, a lot of their energy is spent on trying, A, to find efficiencies in terms of how we operate, how to save money along the path. But also, I think, adjusting to the increased growth within the district, more buildings within the district, and yet still trying to manage and maintain with the staffing levels that they have. And so I think, you know, I, they really do a fine job, I think, of adjusting to those increased needs and servicing the district quite well. And so just like to call that out if I could. And with that, if you're willing to take any questions?
I do just have, it's just interest, really, but this program evaluation format is very different than what we've seen in previous years. So I was just, I'm not sure where that change came from.
I think in looking at that at the ELT level, we talked about trying to make it more focused on data in terms of the use of surveys rather than it just being a director-generated or subjective evaluation. So you have those categories that are captured along with the assessment that's being gathered through survey information. And in fact, I think we transitioned to that over the course of the last year, so it's relatively new.
This is first I've ever seen it, so. Okay.
Do you, are you, is it a good thing or are there missing things from previous year?
I think the previous form, and I, you know, I don't care about form as much as content. It's just that there was, there were specific places that aligned the work with the strategic plan, and I think that these are.
With specific goals and objectives.
Right, and these are less consistent in that alignment.
Okay. Or to make sure that that's consistent.
Okay.
But the work that's happening is good. Just want to make sure that we're doing what we have said we want to be doing.
Okay. In regard to 10.05, as far as superintendent reports, it has been a good start to the school year. We had the opportunity to travel around on Wednesday and Thursday and visit all of our campuses, thanks in part to Mr. Ackerman in taking us on a Twitter tour. You may have followed us on, on Twitter a little bit, but had great visits with each of our campuses as well as faculty and staff. So appreciate everyone for getting us off to a great start for 2014-15. I do want to pull from some numbers that were made available to us today, just an enrollment update. These are hot off the press. And starting back in May of 2014, at the conclusion of May, our total district numbers K through 12 captured 11,566 students. When you add to that our pre-K numbers of 338 students, our pre-K through 12 at the conclusion of last year was 11,904 students. So traffic transition over to this morning, in terms of where we're at for 2014 and 15, grades K through 12 capturing 11,858 active students. Add to that our current pre-K enrollment of 271 students. Our pre-K through grade 12 currently stands at 12,129 as of today, as of today, compared to, again, May 29th of last spring, of 11,904. The only disclaimer that I would put out there is active students might, in fact, include some students that have yet to transfer out for whatever reason. So we're going to be working on those numbers and have a more concrete number as the weeks progress, but certainly by the time we submit our September numbers to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we'll continue to monitor that.
So at this later date, will we have more going out than coming in likely, or is that going to just offset?
It would liable to have a little bit of both.
Okay.
You may have some that we still bring in and draw in. For example, those pre-K numbers at 271, we anticipate that being well over 300. So that number could, could likely shoot up rather than drop down. But at the higher levels, as far as even secondary, you may have some transfer outs that just have yet to land in another district and are still retained as active in our power school system.
So we're right on track with our 300-ish growth per year?
Correct. The other piece to pull in would be that demographic study as far as applied economics. Applied economics anticipated us being at 11,787 students grades K through 12 as compared to where we're currently showing at 11,858. So that's something to certainly be mindful of.
That's pretty close.
Pretty close for 11,000.
That's 70.
We're exceeding, albeit pretty close to what applied economics had anticipated. So I wanted to make sure you have those numbers, and we'll again look to provide more accurate and updated information. Appreciate Dr. Solari putting that information together for us this morning. The other piece I wanted to mention is really just our continued watching and looking at our legislative updates, particularly the tax bills that came out of the legislative session this last spring and that are due for the veto session beginning on September 10th. We're going to be watching that, particularly as it relates to our proxy revenues. It's anticipated that the school district could lose up to $1,157,426 should the governor's veto be overridden by the legislature. So we're going to continue to monitor that. Additionally, House Bill 1689 is being elevated in regard to how the formula is adjusted. Typically, it stands in that it's a percentage adjustment that occurs. House Bill 1689 actually changes that to the state adequacy target being adjusted. So that's something that we're watching. So if they draw down the state adequacy target, in essence, what that would mean is that the state would be fully funding the formula, when in reality, we know that we would actually be receiving less funds than what is called for in the foundation formula. So we're monitoring that. The other piece that's relatively new is Amendment 3 that will be on the ballot in the fall in terms of the constitutional amendment dealing with standard-based performance evaluations along with retaining and dismissal, demotion promoting of teachers, along with teacher tenure being a big issue there. So we're going to continue to monitor that in terms of what's coming, coming out. You'll likely see a lot pushing for Amendment 3, but then you'll also see some formalized opposition to Amendment 3 as well in the coming weeks. Those are the items we had in addition to our superintendent report.
Very good. Anything for the administration? We are setting a record here, folks. Upcoming meetings. I believe we talked about, go ahead. Do you have something you want to add?
I was just going to add, you have those items provided for your information. Mr. Connor, Mr. Evans, and I had a conversation about October 6th as far as our first study session and perhaps utilizing that as more of a retreat structure in being able to, rather than coming in multiple nights in the month of October, being able to, to start off with our study sessions with a focus on the board retreat. So we'll get some information out in terms of the tentative attendance as well as to what that could look like. But those dates are provided for your information.
I don't know that our, have the Monday dates gone out? Is that something? They're already out?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
As far as the outlook invites.
Yeah. I was, I didn't think they were already out. Very good. Any other dates to be aware of?
Are we looking at extended time on the 6th?
Probably carving out a couple of hours, so maybe 6 to 8, 6 to 9.
Very good. Any other dates? Okay. Board committee reports? Anything from TIF? It's been fairly quiet. I will mention, and Kim Marie, you can help me with this. What's the name of the Parks District that we're attempting to put together within the entire Liberty School community?
Recreation.
Is it?
Recreation District.
The new recreation district? We've been asked to appoint a member from the school board to that district at some point. We will have to do that. I was going to try to call Sandra Friday and get it on the agenda, and I forgot about it. But we need to get an, an appointment from this board to that district, and we'll talk more about that in upcoming, upcoming meetings. Anything else? Any other board committee activities? Quiet on the home front.
Summertime stuff.
Yes, it's still summer. Okay. Board remarks?
I just have one remark. And I, I know that there's been a lot in the news about Epic this week, but I just want to mention the work that Michelle Schmitz and her team have done and everyone behind the scenes has done to get that opened. If you haven't had a chance to stop by with Kids in the Building, it is an amazing, amazing place. And I'm just so excited that we have it operate in our district.
Those teachers were pretty incredible when we went on that Friday afternoon after publication. And at 4 o'clock.
At 4 o'clock, because when they gained access to the building.
On Friday afternoon with all of their boxes still left to be unpacked. Elementary teachers who are typically crazy busy for the entire month of August had not set foot in their classrooms, and they were so excited. It was incredible to watch them, oh, come and look at this and look at this and check this out. When are you coming back? And, you know, you have to come and see us after everything's moved in. It was amazing. But also, the tour of all of those other buildings. And, and I'd like to thank Kevin for that, giving us a little insight into how that has all gone down, because that is impressive, how we are starting to look at our spaces in a different fashion. Very exciting.
Driving by all these locations and seeing no modulars all over the parking lot.
And no traffic.
Thank you to the Liberty community for that. Yes.
No learning cottages?
Okay, any other remarks before we adjourn? If not, you mean a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All right, Sandra, we call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.